But thank you, City Council, for allowing us to come and present a discussion item. We're just looking for some direction and maybe a request at the end of this discussion of what our next steps should be. So, city staff has been working with Planning Commission over the last few months, I'd say three to four months, about looking at our short-term rental and bed and breakfast ordinance to modify some things to be updated. What I wanted to go through very quickly first was just the purpose statements out of our zoning ordinance to kind of remind us of why we have our zoning ordinance and why we want to do some regulations for short-term rentals and bed and breakfast. So, again, why do we want to modify? And it's, again, promote beneficial and appropriate development of all land and most desirable use of land in accordance with a well-considered plan. Protect character and establish pattern of desirable development in each area. Prevent or minimize land use incompatibilities and conflicts among different land uses. Maintain property values by stabilizing expectations and ensuring predictability in development and establish process that effectively and fairly applies regulations and standards of zoning ordinance and respects rights of property owners and interests of citizens. So, those are our purpose statements that our department looks at at any time that we're trying to make a change or bring something forward. So, I talk about our short-term rental and bed and breakfast. Our goals with doing this is to protect the health and safety of our neighborhoods, citizens and visitors, with emphasis on child safety around school properties. Our other goal is to provide a streamlined review and renewal process for short-term rentals and bed and breakfast property owners where they know expectations of ordinance and consequences for not following the ordinance. The third goal was to provide a, for continued growth of commercial and multifamily areas which are appropriate locations, close to community amenities as locations for short-term rental and bed and breakfast properties. So, those are our goals that we're trying to do with some of our modifications with Section 406. So, as you know, these are some of the repeat things, but I'm going to go through these fairly quickly. In the discussion is a reference to a license requirement instead of the conditional use. We're saying, okay, let's just keep the conditional use. There's not really a separate license process, per se. In the residential districts of RS1, RS2, RS3, and Ranch and Estate, these properties will require a conditional use process, that they would come to the city, go before Planning Commission, and obtain a conditional use with conditions potentially of how they need to operate their property. Also in those districts, there will be a 500-foot separation between the properties, from property line to property line, as well as a 500-foot separation from public schools. And that separation from the public schools is from the areas in which the children, students, and everything are working and being educated. Currently, our ordinance says neither of those would be a variable per ordinance, which means they could not go to the zoning board of adjustment. In commercial districts, there would be no conditional use required, and of course, it's got general commercial, general commercial, heavy commercial, office warehouse, office commercial, neighborhood center, heavy commercial, light manufacturing, heavy manufacturing. We'd also eliminate the requirements that are no longer allowed, specifically talking about outdoor gatherings. You can't really prevent those. If you're able to have a Christmas party at your house and invite all your friends, why can't you do that at a short-term rental? Same thing with the road pavement. Some of our roads are not up to that 30-foot standard, and so we can't really limit them because of something they can't control. We did request to shorten the process for an appeal so that it can move quicker, so that we can get the operators and the neighbors' answers quicker if somebody needs to appeal a decision. And it also provides a revocation process of that conditional use that's providing protection for our neighborhoods by the Planning Commission at an annual process. So, annually, short-term rentals and bed and breakfast would come to the city, they would report all of their stuff. We would be double-checking to see if they have any violations, have they been paying their hotel occupancy taxes? And then, we actually have set forth in the ordinance a process of revocation if we need to revoke that conditional use. We really don't have that right now, and this is really the one thing that allows us to do true enforcement against that conditional use, is we can revoke it through Planning Commission if necessary. All of our evidence right now is pointing that we haven't had to really do that. We've been very successful with the operators that have come in. Most of them are following the rules. We're following up with some others that are getting them coming through, and that's why you see a higher case count right now of trying to get them to come into compliance. The operators are looking forward to that administrative process. It's less laborsome for them. They're able to come in and show, hey, we've actually done our job, this is a business for us, or a process for them. And we always hear that, even from our Planning Commission chair, that if they're not taking care of their property as a short-term rental, they're not going to be successful. And I think that evidence is very true. Those that are not taking care of their property, not maintaining noise levels, not maintaining, you know, irritating neighbors, they're not successful. The ones that are doing it correctly, they're very successful. So, here on the residential side, I kind of just broke down on the residential just to get, drill down just a little bit deeper. So, again, that's that 500-foot buffer distance between any other short-term rental or bed and breakfast, from property line to the property line. On the single-family residential and ranch and estate zoning, there was a question about can more than one structure on that property be used as a short-term rental or Airbnb, or bed and breakfast, excuse me? And the answer is no. Zoning allows only one primary structure. You can't use the secondary structure for living space, you can only use the primary structure. So, zoning controls that, not just the short-term rental ordinance. Schools, again, in RS1, RS2, RS, that should be RS3, and RNE District also have a 500-foot buffer distance. They are required a conditional use in residential. They will get a permit and an inspection annually from the building permits department. And again, they will have an annual renewal process that's administrative. Any questions on the residential before I go to the commercial, which is just a little bit? And I've got some slides as well, just to give some examples.
Erin, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Can we extend the footage on the family, the homes, that are close by a school property from 500 to 1,000 feet?
We could do that. It's a big, that would be a bigger buffer.
This would be just for the safety of the children that would be around the school, that maybe someone would come and do the Airbnb, and then we not know anything about their background and stuff. So, for that reason, I would like to see that 1,000 feet.
And what I'd like to do is I'd like to bring some images of what those impacts may be of finding some of the schools that are in our neighborhoods, and let's put that 1,000-foot buffer on it and see what that looks like, so that y'all can have some visuals with what that may be if we're able to move forward.
That'd be great, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, any questions?
On number three, besides schools, did you give any consideration to childcare facilities or areas where children routinely congregate?
We did. Our biggest challenge with that is you don't have to register to be a true daycare all the time. There are times that do mom-and-pops, and there's even after-school programs, and there's lots of other things that happen, and we just are not able to give an accurate listing that we could keep updated, and it would be a very big challenge to do enforcement to make sure that we're not misrepresenting something that we may talk to the short-term rental or the bed and breakfast applicant and say, well, we think it's fine, but then come to find out maybe a church is operating something that we just weren't aware of. And that's very challenging.
The Planning Commission also talked through that and just felt it was impossible to enforce, because there's no way of knowing where all those are, as opposed to a public school where you will know where that is.
There are some established youth athletic facilities. One that jumped into mine was Southside Rec Center. Can that not apply to them, too?
Right now, it only applies to schools, so that doesn't. You could add, you would probably have to designate, because various places can run after-school programs, you know, a church or a facility, so we don't monitor those either. So, it gets to be difficult. So, you would have to, in this case, if you want to say a specific rec center, you'd almost have to name which one it is.
Any further questions from the council? Okay.
Okay. So, here's some of our imaging, and this, I apologize that the image seems kind of small, but all of the pink areas are those residential areas that are RS1, RS2, RS3, and Ranch and Estate. So, that's single-family, two-family, three-family, that is not necessarily your multifamily areas. Now, some multifamily areas fall in there, but usually RM1 and RM2 is set aside for multifamily, in which our city and our ordinances and our codes, even the building codes, sees those as commercial properties. And so, you'll see that the commercial areas, again, through our corridors, are in those, that green area. So, now, you want to know what the little red dots and the blue dots are. The red dots are short-term rentals. The blue dots are schools with a 500-foot buffer around just their property line as of right now. Now, you can see from this expanded view, there are some schools that are definitely neighborhood schools, and then you have some schools that are adjacent to commercial areas and neighborhoods, and then you have some schools that are clearly in the commercial area. And I've got a kind of a zoomed-in of an area in just a moment. So, here is a discussion point from last time. On the right of this, the pink area, that's RS2, so that's two-family residential. On the left, the yellow and the green, the yellow is RM1, so low-rise multifamily, and the green is commercial. And you can, I tried to make the transparency to where you can see that most of these properties on this side were probably built out as single-family, but they're in the RM1 district. RM1 allows a multitude of structure types. Now, some of these properties could go with duplexes in the future. Some of these, somebody may buy up an entire block and do some kind of multifamily in the future. What we're saying is this zoning line between residential, true residential, and then it turns into more of a commercial or an area that's moving towards commercial, we would allow short-term rentals in by right. They would not have to do a conditional use. On the residential side, the RS2, they would need to do a conditional use. I know that was one of the questions. This red one right here just happens to be a current short-term rental. That's why we kind of took this image a little closer. This is kind of close to the downtown area. If you kept going west, you'd run into downtown. As you keep going east, you're going to go back into neighborhoods until you hit Bell Street. Any questions on that slide? Or what it represents? Okay. So, here's our commercial districts. So, again, we lump our RM1 and RM2, low-rise and high-rise multifamily, in with our commercial, because that's where our ordinances and our codes, our building codes lump them in. They would be allowed without a conditional use. If they were to go to a short-term rental or a bed and breakfast, they may still have a change of occupancy process to go through, through the building code. That is still a process we do all day, every day, with different businesses that go from maybe retail, then they may want to be a mechanic shop, and then they may want to come back and do something different. Well, they have to do a change of occupancy, which triggers inspections by our building division and our fire marshal. And so, as we looked at this more closely and drilled down, our commercial and RM1 areas, they are getting those change of occupancies and those inspections as needed. Also in our commercial areas, there was a question last time about property next to each other, about this buffer distance in commercial. There really isn't one in a commercial area, or an RM1, or an RM2 area. There's no distance requirement. So, here's an example. This is off of North Chadburn, and you can see Grape Creek that kind of snakes through there. The property right here, 4003 North Chadburn, is a short-term rental. They also own that property right there, and they are hoping to turn both of those into short-term rentals. They're both residential-type structures, they just are in a commercial district. Well, right now, our current ordinance prevents this structure from being a short-term rental. It has to be a business of some other kind. Well, that doesn't make a lot of sense when you start considering, in general commercial, you could have a hotel, and a hotel, and a hotel, and we don't have any separate rules for them, and they have a less-than-30-days population that come in and go out all the time. So, why would we treat our short-term rentals differently in our commercial areas? And that's kind of what we've been talking with the Planning Commission, and they agree it doesn't make sense to require a separation distance or a conditional use process in those commercial areas. Then here's, I think, I believe this is my last slide. This is the commercial downtown area, and again, we went back with just schools, and so we look at anything that was an elementary or secondary school. This here is a public school, and we have two private ones that are right here, and so they both have buffers around them. And of course, this is in our downtown area. The green, obviously, is traditional commercial or central business district. This pink area is actually the Shannon, most of that is Shannon property, and it's under a planned development, so that's why it changed a different color. But if you look at this school here, this is Chadburn, that comes right through here and across the river, and I think one of the things that we're looking for, for our central business district, our downtown area, is short-term rentals and livability in our downtown area. If we have buffers around our schools in commercial areas, that may prevent that in some of our commercial areas. Now, if you wanted to be a hotel right in here, there's no prohibition. So, again, in commercial areas, do we want a buffer around schools when you can still have a hotel there, but you can't have a short-term rental? So, that's one of the questions that we probably need to have discussion on when we meet with as a joint meeting, if that's possible. Let me see if I can get all that off of there. There we go.
Erin, and that's the 500-foot buffer, is that correct?
Yes, sir. That is the 500-foot buffer. That is not the 1,000-foot buffer. So, if we did the 1,000-foot, that would be twice that size and be pretty significant in a commercial area. We'll certainly show both commercial and residential what those differences would be.
Erin, oh, I'm sorry. Just a minute, Harry. Erin, I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm sure everyone up here knows it, but for the public, what is the difference between your short-term rental and your bed and breakfast?
The biggest difference is bed and breakfast, the operator lives on-site.
Okay.
Short-term rental, they rent the entire property, no operator there. You have to have a local operator or property owner within the Tom Green County, but bed and breakfast, they must live on-site.
Thank you very much for that clarification. Okay, Harry?
Yes. On this particular slide that you've got here, you've got one bed and breakfast that really looks like it falls up here at the freshman campus. And that freshman campus is no longer going to house students as of this next August. Will that influence, it's still, the school district will still own the property, but there won't be any students on there.
Well, that's something we would have to look to see, because we don't know when they may decide to, well, let's just have a class over there. We've got enough good facility to have one or two classes, and so that's very difficult for city staff to know. This short-term rental here, I know the hospital uses it a lot, particularly when they have professional staff that come in and say, hey, you can just stay right up here on the road, you can come and do an education thing at the hospital. So, I think it would be very challenging for us to know, particularly as a school that, you know, unless they sold the property and somebody new bought the property that we knew was not an education facility, but it'd be very difficult to know in the future, are they having students there? Until we've already maybe made a decision, and then that causes problems.
The reason I ask that question is, is I know Shen would like to have additional properties as STRs, because they have people from out of town coming for, for example, cancer treatment, or heart treatments, whatever the case may be, and they, those relatives would like to be close to where the hospital is at. So, anyway, something I think we need to, need to see if there's a resolution on.
And, Harry, I think that's the reason staff and even the Planning Commission really recommends that in commercial districts, if a school's in that commercial district, that doesn't, you don't count that. The commercial district, it's allowed by right, because you can have a hotel right there beside it. We're not going to restrict them. So, how should, why should we treat something else different in that commercial district? So, we would recommend, commercial district, school or not, it's allowed.
Well, before I move to this slide, which is asking for us to set a date in the future to sit down and do a joint meeting, are there any other scenarios, questions? Is there anything when we come back for a joint discussion with Planning Commission and City Council that you would like to see? Like Councilwoman Gonzalez's suggestion about the 1,000-foot, is there anything visually that you'd like us to see to try to research to help this move forward?
Questions?
Yes, Tom.
I'm just wondering if there would be any benefit, because it may be more work than there is benefit to doing the work. Would there be benefit to see that the current childcare facilities, which I'm going to assume are in probably RS1, RS2, RS3 district, I'm assuming? But to see where those are, and would we want to consider a larger buffer, a smaller? I don't know that there's any benefit to that. That just runs through my mind.
I would say the biggest challenge first is you're going to have incomplete data. You're only going to get what's listed somewhere. You're not going to get everything that's listed. So, there's a chance that there's other properties in that area that are childcare-like, and so we're not going to be able to give a true representation of where they are and are not.
Yeah.
They're running in and out of their home, for instance. We have no idea of knowing where those are, and it's impossible to keep up with it.
Yeah. That was the reason for the question, thank you.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Tom.
Erin, when we come back to do our joint meeting, a concern I have is, after listening to what we were discussing executive the last time we met, existing short-term rentals and what our pending reach is going to do to those that exist. I have strong reservations against taking something away from somebody that's already had that. So, I just want that to be in the forefront of anybody's mind. I mean, that happened to that one guy over in Santa Rita last year, just happened to be there on a bad day, and they basically terminated his STR. He came back through variance and an appeal, and we gave it back to him. But I like looking at some of these things here, and with what pending legislation, basically what San Angelo would be liable for is if we took something away. I think we certainly need to keep that and maybe educate the community on, hey, these are things that we have to keep in mind pending legislation from whatever district court, the one in Fort Worth, or the one in Austin. I think the community would be good if we give a public information sheet or something of that, to at least know kind of what guidelines we're trying to follow. That's all I've got. Thank you, Lucy.
Thank you.
And thank you, Councilman Thompson. Right now, we have the ordinance written to where those properties that are existing are, and out there as a short-term rental, they would actually get to maintain their distances. If there's something that came forward that would make them non-conforming, we don't want to take away their, and make them non-conforming, and so that's how we have the ordinance currently drafted. But I do agree, we should put some public education together so that we have some stuff for the public.
Yes, sir.
Early on in this discussion, I believe one of the situations that provoked this was zero lot-line houses, patio homes. I feel a little uncomfortable about this.
Yeah. So, those would fall into the RS3 typically. Those are RS3-zoned homes, and so in RS3, they would fall into all of the, let me get back here to that residential slide. They would fall into all of these requirements. So, they would still have the 500-foot separation, they would still have the buffer from the schools, they would still have the conditional use process that they would have to go through, and a revocation process in case they were a bad player for some reason. So, our RS3 districts, that's why we intentionally put them in there. Now, RM1 does allow some zero-lot-line homes, but most folks are looking at the RM1 as a smaller lot line, and I think that's more of a zoning ordinance issue than a short-term rental issue, and I think we are going to look at how to address that in the future. All right. Let me see if I can get to the, go the right way here. So, if there are no other questions at this moment, I'm going to say that this is what the city staff and Planning Commission is recommending to move forward, is an amendment, an update of Section 406 to the zoning ordinance, an amendment and update to Section 313, which is our use table with reference of short-term rentals and bed and breakfast establishments of where they're allowed or where they need a conditional use. We are requesting a date of April 16, 2024, which is about six weeks away approximately, that we want to make sure that we have ample time for the public to come and talk with us, to, if any of the operators wanted to come and talk to us, so that we can put this on our website, and folks can digest the draft ordinance to see if we need to make any changes, so that we can have a good, solid meeting with a joint meeting on April the 16th. With that, we would need to do the proper noticing with the Texas Open Meetings Act, which would be a public posting, a newspaper notice, and a website notice. And that meeting on the 20, on the 16th of April would be a joint meeting, a combined meeting of Planning Commission and City Council.
Is everyone available that day? What day of the week is it?
It's Tuesday.
It's Tuesday, the 16th?
Regular meeting day, yeah.
It's a regular meeting, okay.
Yeah, we didn't want to throw you a curveball, too bad.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any further questions from the council?
I would think we're all in place.
Yeah, I'd say schedule it on the 16th.
Do we need an actual motion?
Yes. With no further questions, do I have a motion for approval on Item B?
So, can I second?
Second, or...
Larry.
Larry made a second, and Harry made the first motion. So, with that, do we have public comment? Jackie, come on up.
I just kind of want to make a general comment. Jackie Chestnut, as a person who lives with codes and regulations for a living, that's my life, commercial particularly, because that's where I live, and in dealing with this, as we're moving into residential and all of the things that we're looking at regulating in residential as we move in this, and I've watched this process over the years, I would caution everyone here that the bottom line of what we're supposed to do is cost versus containment. And as we put more and more of these regulations in place, and you all are tasked with keeping these regulated, and we're already not able to regulate what we have, that when you look at saying, or how are you going to go out and check these 500 feet and all these other things on a regular basis to control these things you write in paper, how are you going to do it, and who's going to do it, and how are you going to pay for it? And also, the people that are just simply trying to run a business out of their home, my brother has one of these short-term rentals, you're over-regulating them, and then do you get into, do you start applying ADA regulations? How far do you go with the regulations of commercial when you move into this kind of stuff? Residential, we don't have to apply these things. So, that becomes a question as well. And I would love to be more involved in the discussion, because I think we need to back off on some of this limiting of everybody's lives with these government controls where you want to come in and do this, because we're just trying to live our lives out here and make our lives go along and live our lives. And every time you put one of these regulations in control, you limit that, and you cost us money, and you cost you money, and the government already can't pay for its own self anyway, because after all, you're not a business, you're the government. We run businesses out here, and we put the money in there, because we supply the money. So, I would ask y'all to start looking at your regulations, as I sit here and I go through all this stuff, and see what you're proposing for a person like me who simply wants to run a short-term rental out of a home that I own in this city. And how much is that going to cost me? And the question becomes, am I going to do that now? Because it's going to cost me so much to do it, and I've got to deal with so much paperwork, and I don't think I want to do that, because I don't want somebody controlling my life that closely. And I live my life very well, but I don't need that much regulation, and that's what y'all are doing here to the individual citizen. Bad note, I mean, we do it with, we do it with commercial, because we deal with public access. That's the reason I have to do it. But when you're getting in here, you're getting really close. It's really dangerous, and I would caution you with that, and y'all need to back off some on this.
Thank you for your comments, Jackie. Any further public comment?
My name is Doug Robinson. I own a couple of short-term rentals. Been doing it for about a year. And, you know, I've gone to all the planning commissions and the ZBA and all that, and, you know, at the very beginning, it was something that was kind of concerning to people. But I'm redoing a house on Catalina. The house looks a lot better. I've had two people come up and say, hey, when is this going to be ready? Because we want it to be ready by Thanksgiving and Christmas. So, and they, because they want their families to come in and be able to stay in it. The 500 feet, I... The 500 feet, I, let me, there are several reasons that that doesn't work. Number one, listen to staff. Your staff are doing a great job doing this, listen to what they do, they're going to all these things, they're living this every day. But the 500 feet, the reason it doesn't work, if, if that would have worked, and the new proposition of the ZBA not being able to bring one to the ZBA. I've had two houses that I thought were 500 feet away, because on the map, it showed 500 feet away. Now, this isn't staff's fault, this is the vendor's fault, I guess, but turns out, they weren't 500 feet away. And if y'all take it to where we can't bring it to ZBA, well, then I've lost a half million dollars in houses that I can't do what I thought I was going to be able to do with it. So, I mean, just, whenever y'all are looking at this, and when you go to the things, and you have to get your license redone, they say, well, has there been any police incidents? Has there been any code compliance complaints? And there's not. And the, the people that are around us, our neighbors, they're all good with it, because we're improving the neighborhood. There was a guy at the last Planning Commission meeting, he was a younger guy, he's trying to get into Airbnb business, and he did a house on Bird Street. Well, with the 500, he said, you know, his house is like the best house over there, because he's fixed it up for a short-term rental. He said, if we didn't have the 500 feet, I'd be fixing these other houses up, and it would improve the whole neighborhood. And so I, don't, don't look at it as a bad thing, as short-term rentals, because they're really not, and we get so many families here that are just excited to be in San Angelo, excited to be able to stay together, because they're from different cities, and they can't do that in hotels, so. But listen to staff, and I'm glad that y'all are getting them new software. Their software is terrible, it's from 1996. How many of y'all are working on Windows 95 right now? You know, so get them new software, which is great, and anyway, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further public comment? Okay, with no further public comment, we will have, take a vote, that's where I'm at, take a vote. All in favor of Item B say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.